Thank you everyone for being here. This is kind of a nice occasion tonight. We will be recognizing our retiring chief, Fire Chief. But careful I say that because I see our police chief sitting there.
Yeah.
Right, call the meeting officially to order and do a roll call. Counselor Beard.
Here.
Counselor Wilson.
Here.
Counselor Spivey.
Present.
And Counselor London.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Spivey, would you please do on the, oh, I'll go ahead and do minutes. Excuse me, I always like to go minutes first. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes, the pre-council and council for the meeting on December 19th, 2017?
I'll make a motion that dispensing, the reading of minutes, reading of minutes be dispensed since all council members have received the copy and that they be approved as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now Counselor Spivey, on the bills, please.
Thanks, sir. I make a motion for the approval of the current bills for payment in the amount of $460,099.43.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have any professional or consultant reports tonight? All right. Mayor, it's your turn.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is a special night. We're going to be honoring our fire chief who has retired. But before we do that, I have just a couple of announcements. I want to let you know about the town hall meeting. Those of you who were here earlier heard some discussion about that. We have a town hall meeting that is scheduled for January the 30th at 6:00 PM and it will be in the library meeting room next door here. So, those of you who have participated, those are meetings that I call and previously they have been just open discussion. We will probably have a couple of topics that we will make sure are on the agenda for that night and then it can be anything else that you want to discuss or to ask or talk about at that point. So, please make a note of that. Those of you who are interested in having input into what's going on in the city, that's a good way to have your voices heard in an open forum. I think, was, just, was there any other announcements? Yeah, all the announcements at this point. We're going to our presentations now relative to the fire department if we have a few minutes to do that.
Please.
I want to ask Chief Davis if he will come up. Chief Dawson. We almost didn't recognize you out of uniform. Congratulations, sir, on your retirement. Thank you for your service to the city of Irondale over all these years and I know not only the city of Irondale but with Birmingham as well. When Chief came in and told me that he was retiring, we were sitting at the table and having a little conversation about that and he mentioned that his daughter has just retired last year. Let's turn back to the back here. I said, "How in the world does that work?" He's retired twice. So, anyway, congratulations, sir. We certainly appreciate your service. I want to read this certificate of appreciation presented to you for your service to the city of Irondale. Whereas Randy A. Davis has been a firefighter for 36 years and whereas Randy A. Davis has worked for the Irondale Fire Department for 14 years as the fire chief and whereas the fire department under his leadership has grown to 42 firefighter positions. Whereas Chief Davis has been instrumental in securing over $2 million in new fire trucks and approximately $1 million in federal grants to purchase other fire equipment. And whereas Chief Davis has facilitated the preserving and restoring of the first fire truck in the city of Irondale, a 1961 American La France, and I saw you driving that on a cold day the other day, open air. Be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Irondale would like to express our appreciation to Chief Randy A. Davis for his service to the city of Irondale and congratulate him for a job well done. Now therefore be it further resolved that we wish Randy A. Davis the very best upon his retirement from the city of Irondale and would like to declare that he will be greatly missed not only by the citizens but by all who worked with him during his career here at the city of Irondale. Congratulations. Turn it over to Assistant Chief Dawson here to take some more presentations.
Unfortunately Governor Ivey could not be here tonight, but she sends her regards and she also sends a proclamation. Governor Kay Ivey, state of Alabama, has presented this certificate of recognition to Fire Chief Randy A. Davis. This certificate is presented in recognition of your retirement of 36 years in fire and rescue service effective December 31st, 2017. On behalf of the great state of Alabama, congratulations on your retirement and thank you for pretending and serving the citizens of the great state of Alabama.
And Chief, on behalf of the Irondale Fire Department, I'd like to present you with this, this shuttle box of your patches and your badge.
Thank you. Any comments, Chief?
About the ridge of these speeches. But yes, I'm, I'm not going to miss out on the opportunity to thank each one of you, councilman, city park, mayor, staff here. I've known Butch Gerald since a long time before I came here. Fine man, dear, appreciate the job that the attorneys provide for us, but especially for the citizens here and the department heads and I feel like I've just been surrounded by friends the whole time I've been here. And so, it's like, it wasn't like going to work, it's just like going to just another avenue where I could, you know, be with my friends and family and, and it's, you know, I never really dreaded coming to work. My wife hated that part of it. I think she would have wished that I would have wanted to stay home, but I wanted to go to work and, and you know, it's just so rewarding to be able to have a career such as this. And let me assure you that the firefighters that are remaining here, y'all have got a top-notch fire department, men that are dedicated and, and I love every one of them. I've, you know, proudly, you know, been with them on calls and, and let me just tell you, there's times they've amazed, I've seen a lot, but they've amazed me at times and so you're in really good hands. Let me just tell you that right now. So, thank you for this. I appreciate, you know, these, the admiration, you know, I virtually would have done it for nothing, but, I mean, because it's just that much of a reward to be a part of this. So, but thank you so much. I know y'all didn't come to hear me give a speech, but thank you very much.
It's not over, we still have two more gifts to give. In the 14 years I've known Chief Davis, you start to learn his likes and dislikes. You, you know what gets him in a good mood? And there's one thing that always got him into a good mood. When he worked at Station 1 in Birmingham, there's a little restaurant at the end of the block called Marilyn's and there, I talked to Marilyn and she sends him a plate of fudge brownies.
Good luck getting one.
Every month, the mayor has a department head meeting and each department takes a turn
in providing lunch. Well, the mayor asked for the fire department to do it a couple of times and Chief would always ask me, "What do you think we should do?" And I said, "Well, I'd like to do Jim and Nick's or I'd like to do Irondale Cafe." Well, when it was over with and it's time to pay the bill, Chief would always say, "High blood peanut butter sandwiches." For tonight, this is his reception.
This is the ultimate survival.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let me, let me invite you all after immediately following this meeting, when the council meeting is over, so make a little pressure on these guys. We'll have a reception back in the mayor's office. You're all invited to greet Chief Randy Davis and his family and the firefighters there. A beautiful reception set up tonight. You're welcome to the table.
Thank you. Do we have any department head reports tonight? Any comments of any department head tonight? Thank you. Okay, we'll start tonight. Counselor London?
For the first Happy New Year, I'm not going to be the one to order this reception. I'm glad you're here.
Same goes. Good to see everybody. Happy New Year.
I don't have anything to forward on tonight. Do you?
We got a Happy New Year every day. Hey, I'm not going to break it. Happy New Year.
I will just make one quick comment. Charlie Waller, who most of you are familiar with because of our representation by his firm, his council, has done a blog, an invited blog that will be posted on Alabama.com this coming Sunday, I believe it is, and you need to read it. He's promoting an idea that's been out there for 100 years but never seemed to happen and that's basically county cooperation. There's a lot of things that can be achieved by Jefferson County if the county and municipalities would come together and look at things like simple jail, look at things like simple fresh, haul, dump, et cetera. So, it's, it's very well written and it does give you a lot of food to fall, hopefully with some of the changes in Birmingham and other things that are going on, maybe we'll see some momentum this time. But again, something worth reading. Charlie did a real good job of going over every particular item and these, again, like I say, they've been out there for a long time, but they need to move forward at this point. That's all we have to comment for tonight. Thank you.
Do we have any reports of boards or non-council committees? I don't see the shoemaker here tonight, so I'm assuming anyone else knows it. Thank you. Then I make a motion that we leave regular council meeting and go into public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Notice is hereby given that at its regular public meeting beginning at 6:30 PM on January 4th, 2018, in the Irondale City Council chamber is located at 101 20th Street South, Irondale, Alabama, 35210 within Jefferson County, Alabama. The city council of the city of Irondale will hear comments from interested citizens concerning the proposed rezoning from an A1 agricultural district to a R1 residential district for the property located at 2391 and 2381 Monroe Drive, Irondale, Alabama, 35210. I would open the mic to anyone here that is here to make comments for this particular ordinance. Would you please identify yourself?
Yeah, so I'm Jennifer Jones. We're just asking for rezoning. We're moving our, trying to move our property line so we can add onto our house.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make any comments to the other side of that argument? All right. This item has already gone through planning and zoning commission and just so you know, their recommendation was for approval. We have Mr. Gerald's here if there are any questions. No additional questions?
Can I make a motion? Would you close up here?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we'll go right to the regular council meeting. Unfinished or else people need to approve the agenda, so who's going to try this?
I got it. I got it. I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda with the following changes. On under unfinished business, item number one, to be changed to read, "Resolved that resolution 2017 R141 allows Ellard Park to be used as a dog park." Well, what, basically what we're taking out of the resolution is the area behind Top Pavilion and Beacon and standing Ellard in that place. And items number one, two, three, four, and five, as they stand.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Do we have any public comments on agenda items open? And I would ask you please if you come forward to the mic, if you would take the time before you leave to fill out the paperwork at the back, to identify yourself and also to keep your comments in a three-minute time limit. Anybody here that would like to make comments on agenda items open? All right, thank you. And we'll go to our first one, which is unfinished business. It's resolved at resolution 2017 R141. And finish your statement on that if you will, Terry, as you rerule it.
Resolution R2017 R141 allows Ellard Park to be used as a dog park.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
I'll make that motion.
He made a motion. Okay, let's do a roll call vote on that, please.
Discussion. Discussion.
Discussion. Do we have any?
One thing, one thing that I'm nervous about is, on this is, I, I like Ellard as a better solution as opposed to Beacon, but one thing we've talked about is, is having Public Works take a, a look at both solutions and have a, we talk about process and how much money things are going to cost, have a more educated decision on what is going, each, each solution would entail. So, right now, we're kind of making the decision, which I do like, but we have nothing to back that up. So, that's my only fear.
Comments?
I'm going to echo what Councilman Spivey said. You know, I, I like Ellard, but I'm also concerned about a more in-depth conversation about this because one of the questions I had about Ellard since it has come up, and we did discuss it last time, is that, is this a permanent solution to leave it at Ellard or is it, what in my world, what we call perm temp, permanent temporary? I have to explain that. But, you know, I'm, I'm just, we need a dog park. I like Ellard, you know, but I'm, I'm just kind of concerned about it. That's all.
I'm open to suggestions from the two council members where, where you put it, if not here.
And I'm open to listen to other stuff, I guess, but I'm just like, you know.
Question is again, where would you put it besides Ellard?
Well, I think what I was saying is it needs to be tabled for future discussion after we have a better idea of the nuts and bolts of both potential solutions.
As you have it right now, just to look at it, I mean, I agree with what you all said there. We've looked at all of them. Your, your motion from last time said Beacon, you thought Beacon was the best place last time. Now it's Ellard and we've already approved temporarily Ruffner, so there is no consensus at this point, other than the fact that you all did take action to temporarily do it at Ruffner to give you time to actually think through it and regardless of what might buzz might be out there, it has not been thought through. There hasn't been a park committee meeting on it to talk about it, to discuss it since, since you made the actions that you did. So, it seems a bit rather knee-jerk reaction than thoughtful, reflective, analytical look at what we have and what we need to do. So, you know, aside from that, if you vote on it as you, as you've moved it now, you're going to have two dog parks because you've got Ruffner already approved.
Which we haven't seen it.
That's right. And you've got now a suggestion to have a second dog park and this one doesn't have any, any funding attached to it yet. Where are you going to get the funding for this and what is the cost? I mean, this is your motion, Counselor Beard. What is the cost to retrofit Ellard? We don't know that. I don't think you know that. I know we haven't, we haven't done anything from a staff standpoint because we haven't been asked to because it just came up tonight. So, it doesn't seem like there's been much thought put into this at this point.
I would, I would look at the, the tabling, again, if we could bring it up at the next council meeting and also offer it as a discussion point for the work session a week from Monday and then make a decision and then vote on it at that time.
Well, let me ask, we had a motion on the floor. I thought it got seconded.
I will withdraw.
So, this is up for a vote?
I will withdraw.
Well, we still have to vote.
No, I will withdraw.
Yes, you have to vote. It's been seconded. You can't just withdraw it. Am I right?
Right, right.
Okay.
So, we will do a roll call vote.
All right.
Counselor London?
Yes.
Counselor Spivey?
No.
Counselor Beard?
Yes.
Counselor Wilson?
No.
Myself, no. Motion fails. Thank you.
Well, I think I would like to ask though, is in between these two weeks, if, if Public Works could take a look at Ellard and Beacon and try to get a loose idea of what the cost might be to, to, you know, fit those two options as a dog park so that when we do come back and meet, we can have a better idea of what we're talking about.
We'll be happy to do that, but you know, we gave you the estimate on Ruffner at about $2,000.
Right.
Tell you without even looking at it, this would be much more than that.
I understand that.
I know it's the fencing and other costs, so it will be a, just don't have sticker shop.
No, I understand that. I know there's some fencing issues, there's some other issues.
Well, one, another thing I would like to consider is that, put a little bit more accountability on the, on the council. Leading up to those two weeks, we need to kind of have some thoughts in, in our mind, just like Counselor Beard said, you know, okay, we, we talked about the problem, but what's, what's the solution? And, and that was a legitimate question. So, you know, starting with not only Counselor Beard, but Chair of Parks, Counselor London, you know, if you could kind of give us some, some guidance, some thoughts as far as how we need to pursue this, I think some responsibility falls on us to just talk down problems.
Let me, let me, let me just, let me clear something up real quick. As the, I am the park, I, I think people have thought this, that John London make the decision for this park thing is concerned. Let me, let me clear something. I am the park chairperson. That's it. The committee chairperson, that's all I am. I don't make, I don't make any decisions. I don't make decisions. That was my, that was my suggestion to the, to the council. You know, after hearing, hearing the people talk about it in the last council meeting, thinking Ellard would be the best place, council voted down. I don't make any decisions. I am just the chairperson, the committee chairperson. That's all I am. That's all I am. The council make the decision, so Counselor Wilson said, "For me to get, no, that's not, that's not my job. That is, that is not my job. That is not my job." As any, any committee chairperson, that's not their job. They're just a chairperson over that committee. That's all we are. We're just one person, you know? So, I just brought my suggestion. That's all I, that's all I can do, you know? So, it's not my job to go out and decide this is what these things, that's not me. I, I think that's, that's got out on Facebook and, and said, "John London," and that, no, I just want to clear it up tonight on camera and let everybody know that my job is just be the committee chairperson. That's it. That's all power I am. That's all power I am. So, when it comes down and say, "John's going to do it," no, John's not going to do it. John's not going to do it. No, that's not my job to do it. It's been discussed since October, so we had plenty of opportunities to think about different options. Really, we've, we've had plenty of opportunity to think about options for this dog park, just like the citizen have, the council had the same opportunity. I, I have thought through it. You know, I said Beacon. I heard the people talk about it. It's the people, it's the people's city. It's not, you know, it's not John. It's the people. This is y'all. This is y'all doing. I heard them say, "Oh, hell, it might be a good place." Just sitting over there not being used. We own the land, we own the property. It's not being used. Instead of having it temporarily fixed, we can have it permanently fixed. And we don't have to deal with the dog park again. We'll have our own permanent dog park and we don't have to interfere with youth baseball for whether, whether they got five, whether they have 20, whether they have 5, whatever. Don't have to interfere with, interfere with youth baseball. So, to say John is going to do it, no, not my job. My job is as the chair, the committee. That's all my job.
Well, I think this is, again, no additional discussion. We've already taken it off the table, but if we need to discuss it at the work session coming up, that ties into what we may be sitting priorities on. I think that fits in well. But again, we've had a lot of discussion when things weren't passed through parks and recreation before it came to the council. So, we're just trying to make sure you're okay with it in that case.
I'm, I'm, it's the council's decision.
Okay, that's fine. You said what you said. Thank you.
And I did make the disclaimer, I said, "It's the council."
Yeah, but you tried to put it on John. Don't, don't say John ain't going to come. We don't, we don't know. We don't know.
I would like to summarize what just happened so I can make sure that I have corrected some amendments. There was an amendment to change the current resolution or the resolution as it was written from Beacon, from Ellard, from Beacon to Ellard.
Right, and that was approved. Which is approved.
It was voted, no? Terry, you made the motion, John, you seconded, but the motion failed 3 to 2. You had three people against, two people for.
When we approved the agenda, I made the, I made the change on that.
But you have to make a motion to amend, so you are amending, but the amendment comes before the regular resolution because the amendment takes priority. So, we done the amendment and the amendment was lost. So, now you have to tell me, what are you going to do with the original resolution that's here?
When I asked for the agenda to be approved, I made the change to the resolution 2017 141 to Beacon, to Ellard Park. And that was approved when we approved the agenda. I made the change on it during the approval of the agenda.
I know, but you're still amending that resolution and the amendment passed a vote on the resolution, but you still have the resolution on the floor. I just need to know if you want to postpone this.
No, John and I voted for the resolution to be, David, Bobby, Joe, and Steve voted against it, so it failed. Now, John and I can't bring it back before the council again, only these three can.
No, the only thing that I'm, this is what I'm saying, Rob. When you amend the resolution, the amended resolution takes priority before the regular resolution. So, you got to vote on the amended resolution and then if the amended resolution fails, the other resolution is still there until somebody say either we're going to postpone it or we're going to vote for or against it. I'm just asking, what are you going to do with the, the original resolution?
I think once the agenda is amended and it substitutes for the original agenda item and then it's voted.
Under Robert's rules, by approving the agenda with that change.
Yeah, they changed the resolution.
Changed something, okay? Is that good enough for you, Beard?
That's why I interpreted totally differently. But I'm okay with it.
All right, we'll, we'll take the advice of our, okay? Okay, under new business, resolved at resolution 2018 R1, authorizes the mayor to contract with same associates to provide construction slash engineering inspection for the Irondale West Sidewalk Improvement Project in the amount of $68,344. I put that on the floor as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Counselor London?
I have a second.
Okay, Counselor Spivey?
Yes.
Counselor Beard?
The condition that it is actually proceeded with this time, yes.
It's a yes vote there.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson?
I said this. No, that was a yes.
Oh, yes, yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Motion carries. The next one is resolved at the resolution 2018 R2 points and you have a list of names on that. I will, I can read those names out. We have one name that even our best friends can't necessarily always pronounce their last name, but these are people that have volunteered it is for a specific project and they will appoint their members' terms when they have their first meeting. Any, do I have a second on that motion for resolution 2018 R2?
Your second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, now we're doing our ordinance and this is resolved at ordinance 201801, resones the property located at 2381 and 2391 Monroe Drive, Irondale, Alabama. Madrid Drive, Irondale, Alabama, three-five-two-one-zero, changing from, uh, Agricultural A-one District to R-one residential, residential district. Do I have a motion, the ordinance?
I make a motion that the Ordinance number twenty eighteen oh one be considered read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I make a motion that all rules that would prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of Ordinance twenty eighteen dash oh one be suspended, and unanimous consent be given for the immediate consideration of said ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Councilor London?
Yes.
Councilor Spivey?
Yes.
Councilor Beardon?
Yes.
Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
And myself, yes also, thank you.
I make a motion that Ordinance number twenty eighteen dash oh one be finally passed and adopted and introduced.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. And the next one, uh, the next two we will treat in similar fashion. The first one is the Resolution two oh one eight R oh three, which rescinds Resolution two oh one seven R eighty-nine, Special Olex and Property Tax Millage Resolution.
I make a motion that, uh, Resolution twenty eighteen R oh three be, um, considered read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I make a motion that all rules that would prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of Resolution twenty eighteen R oh three be suspended, and unanimous consent be given for immediate consideration of said resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Councilor London?
Yes.
Councilor Spivey?
Yes.
Councilor Beardon?
Yes.
Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
Myself, yay.
I make a motion that Resolution twenty eighteen R oh three be finally passed and adopted and introduced.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. And we resolve the Resolution two oh one eight R oh four, calls for a special election to consider increasing the property tax mileage by six mils, and again, we'll treat that through just like we did on this one, previous one.
I make a motion that Resolution twenty eighteen R oh four be considered read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that all, all rules that would prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of Resolution number twenty eighteen, but...
Okay. You, you only know the first part.
Right.
Okay, okay. We still have the majority, so go ahead.
I make a motion that Ordinance number...
He voted not to consider it read, so he voted to get it against it, it's not unanimous, so he can't go in for it.
I think you can vote in that step, you have to do that, the step, the next step. When you did vote on it.
It gotta be unanimous for it to be considered for a first time, I mean, the way that you are treating this. So since he voted not to consider, it wasn't unanimous consent for it to be read. Now, if he gives unanimous consent to be read, and the next step is unanimous, then you can vote for it, and then if everybody doesn't vote, then that's fine. But with the first two steps, it's gotta be unanimous.
What, what needs to be voted unanimous is the second part of the process, I'm talking about. The first part of the process doesn't really have to be done, only the second part, which you suspend the rules to allow the, uh, most of you go forward, ask it read. So I think the first part does make a difference, but I think the second part is done.
Okay.
So we can go on with the second part.
I make a motion that all rules that would prevent immediate consideration and adoption of Resolution twenty eighteen R oh four be suspended, and unanimous consent be given for immediate consideration of said order.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Councilor London?
Yes.
Councilor Spivey?
Yes.
Councilor Beardon?
Yes.
Councilor Wilson?
No.
And myself, so that means the motion fails.
You're gonna be carried over to the next meeting.
Yes, it'll come back at the next meeting, uh, where it will only require a majority vote.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any general comments from the public tonight?
Senator Barrett, four fifty-six, Chicago. I am coming as the voice of the union. The citizens have come to me, and I don't know why they come to me, probably because I have a big mouth, but anyway, they're coming to me, asking me to ask y'all if there's, why is there not a, if there's a reason why they don't do recycle pickup on Thursday as opposed to Monday, because we have less holidays on Thursdays than we do on Mondays.
Thank you, Mayor. Passed on to the mayor, the mayor can follow up. Do we have any additional comments?
I just have a question, um, just a matter of clarity, so, um, about what happened with Is it now the case that either one of you three have to make a resolution to make Ellard a dog park?
Yep.
And that neither one of y'all can? So it's now, to make it no longer a temporary dog park at Ruffner, you, you two are gonna have to put it back on the agenda?
Correct. Now, right now, as it stands, just what the mayor stated earlier, we have already approved for the dog park to be at Ruffner, as of right now, because that, that resolution has not been resisted. That's what you stated earlier, and that was the case. So just tonight, we tried to change it from Ruffner to Beacon without rescinding the one that we already approved for Beacon, so therefore, we're coming back on Monday after next to discuss exactly where, or what we need to do in reference to the dog park.
But one of you three have to request it be put back on the agenda, John and I can't recover. We were the...
Your answer, your answer to your question is yes.
Yes, yes.
Only these three.
Yes, that's correct.
Are y'all, are y'all in the process of deciding if that's something you wanna do?
Oh, it's, it's definitely something, I have every intention of making sure it's on the agenda for the next meeting.
Right.
All I wanted to know was, I don't wanna make a decision without going the nuts and bolts of the decision, and who knows, maybe after we look at everything, maybe Beacon is the best choice.
Or maybe Ellard is the best.
Maybe Ellard is, but I need to know.
Yeah, and that's the point I was making earlier, I, I think all the councils are responsible. We need to be thinking about this even before we come back in two weeks. That's the point I was trying to make. It doesn't just fall on Council London. I mentioned Council London's name because he's just the chairperson of the committee, like I would say Council Spivey when it comes to finances. That was it. But my point was, I, and I made it very clear, is that I think the council needs to think of or come up with some kind of solution. We can talk about problems all day, but we need to talk about what solution that we're gonna come up with, we, I said we, I didn't say Council London, we, what we need to come up with to resolve this issue about the dog park. It falls on all of us, and it does. So that's my, thank you.
In the meantime, meantime, the mayor is, is, they gonna look at both places and come with the best of numbers, come back with numbers in two weeks, or who wants to view it, look at, and see what those numbers are for.
On that title thirteen thirty-five, Montevallo Road, Irondale. Uh, approximately six or seven years ago, as, as my residents, due to a heavy rain, we had flooding that was doing damage, and are, uh, back behind our residents and the residents along that side of Montevallo. In the past year, the city of Irondale has purchased the equipment to solve part of that issue as far as the clogged storm drain system. But I have now learned that, uh, the storm drain system in Irondale is coming under ADM and a special permit for the first time has to be asked for by the city of Irondale. Now, as we are known here, we have trees all over the park, and the leaves, I have seen some of the yard people, the contractors blow the leaves into the streets. Now, on top of that, just those that are falling in the streets are dropping back in the drain again. For years, ever since we've been here, and I've been here since eighty-seven, we had, the, uh, city had a truck that would go around here in the year and clean up the, you know, food vessel on the streets and all, get the leaves up. But that equipment is now thirty years old, unrepairable, because many of the parts are not available. In conversation with Mr. Pennington, I have found that there is consideration of getting a new piece of equipment, which has two major advantages. It will reduce the number of people required to be on this vehicle to do this job, as it has an automated arm, which can be operated by the driver from within the vehicle, and you have the other person that does the labor work that is done by, you know, to get the stuff where it can be picked up. We have trees in Irondale, the solution is one of two, cut out all the trees or get the proper equipment to keep this job done, because ADM is going to be inspecting here in Irondale, and that could get expensive if we are not in compliance with ADM's requirements. So I am urging the city to consider the proposal being made by Mr. Pennington for the new equipment for this purpose, because Irondale is growing, we're seeing a lot of things happening around here, and there's right now areas that need attention from a storm drain point of view. And having the proper equipment here in the long run will save us a lot of time, money, and headaches, which ADM is, uh, known for creating. So this, this, I'm recommending that this new equipment be seriously considered for Irondale here, as we need it during sample.
Well done. Thank you so much for your comments, and we appreciate it. The mayor is aware of that, and Mr. Pennington does report to the mayor, so they have to be the coordinating activity to get that forward to the council. Thank you so very much for your comments. Any additional comments from the...
Let me say something before we come up. I, I, I guess I'm just, I'm just blowing wind up here since, what, oh three, I guess? Um, I appreciate you bringing that up, and I'm not gonna even add to what you just said, but I, I guess I just sound like a broken record when I just sit up here and say that we need a, a leafing machine or something to pick up, you know? I, I guess no one hears it.
Uh, this has been discussed in several previous meetings, and again, it will be a matter of funding and availability of those funds when the time comes. Thank you. Excuse me.
Yeah, I, I just have a question, and I may have just, um, forgotten, um, what, what the discussion was. I thought we, you mentioned about the two, the two-day garbage pickup, that we would re, we would kind of look at it over a period of time? Did you say six months or three months?
When we implemented this particular, um, amendment, as far as garbage pickup, I mentioned to the mayor that I would like to revisit, um, this particular amendment within a three to six month period, just to see how well?
Right.
Or how not well, it's working. So, um, that is something that will come up, um, you know, that's something that I would like to discuss with the council, just to see, um, you know, if it was a good, uh, idea, or if it was a good move, uh, to kind of do the change this way, so that will come up, uh, pretty soon. But yes, it, it, I did make that comment.
My concern is mostly, it's real cold now, but I just, seems like I really think about when it gets really hot in the summertime, and, and, and we're still having to hold on to this stuff for a whole week, you know? I, that's my biggest concern, so, uh, I, I would like for you to consider looking at that and seeing if that's really, I've been here thirty-seven years, and this is the first time I've had a real issue with the garbage, how we pick up garbage. Thirty-seven years this worked fine, but now I'm not real sure about it. So just think about it, and let us know how we're benefiting, how, maybe, maybe the fact that we're making, saving a whole lot of money would make a difference.
Yeah, maybe I can get some information from the mayor, if you don't mind, I did make that comment, I'll give you...
Can I piggyback on that real quick? Me and James have already had a light sidebar, and we know that, uh, we're gonna be getting some end of year reports together, um, and, you know, to make it available, to have a finance meeting, um, here, and just as soon as we can get that information together. I'm sure trash will be a component of that conversation.
And, uh, I think when we have that meeting, since you're planning anyways, we need to discuss on those items that didn't make the budget, go ahead and make some decisions on what we try to fund, and stop doing it one item at a time when they come up, so that'd be a good thing to plan then. Thank you so very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion? Make a motion. I think we have one more question.
No, I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
I want to speak to...